So I was saying.
Tell me one more line.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 9th, 2020 Laconia City Council meeting. Nice to have you all here. And before we start, as tradition, we will salute the flag. And Counselor Felch, would you lead us in the salute to the flag?
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Felch. At the council table tonight, our recording secretary is City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I'd ask her to call the roll, please.
Counselor Teeny?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Lippman?
Present.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Counselor Hamel contacted me earlier this evening that he would -- is under the weather and couldn't attend.
Counselor Felch?
Here.
Mayor Hosmer?
Present. Also joined at the table are staff Glenn Smith, Finance Director, and Scott Myers, the City Manager. I do not believe on number six, we have a council proclamation tonight. Number seven is the acceptance of minutes from our previous meetings. Minutes of the February 24th, 2020 meeting were distributed to the City Council on Wednesday, February 26th, 2020. With one correction submitted to the clerk, the minutes were redistributed to the council on Thursday, February 27th, 2020. With one correction submitted to the clerk, the minutes will be accepted as redistributed. Don't believe we have any presentations. Under consent and action items, we do have one item, which is a request by the Weers Community Park Association to hold a parking fundraiser event at the Weers Community Center in Weers Community Park, front and rear parking lots, in conjunction with 2020 Laconia Motorcycle Week event. This is something that they conduct traditionally. They are requesting to use the lot from Sunday, June 13th, 2020 -- lots, I should say -- through June 21st, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. for the Laconia Motorcycle Week 2020 fundraising event. Weers Community Park Association is the benefactor of the event. City Council approval is being requested because this event is anticipating revenues above $2,000. There's no cost associated to the city. There's a staff recommendation that this request be approved. This is an appropriate use of the city park property. The Parks and Recreation Commission has approved this request, conditioned upon further approval from the City Council. This is an annual event at the Weers Community Center in Weers Community Park. And this report was submitted by Liza Kelleher of the Parks and Recreation Department. So right now, I'm looking for a motion to approve the request by the Weers Community Park Association to hold a parking fundraiser event at the Weers Community Center in Weers Community Park, front and rear parking lots, in conjunction with the 2020 Laconia Motorcycle Week event being held on June 13th, 2020, through June 21st, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. daily. Counselor Felch making that motion, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, raise your hands. Seeing five votes in favor, that motion passes, five to zero. This -- we'll move on to number 10 on our agenda, which is citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. If you have something you'd like to speak to us about, let us know about, and it's not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to come forward and share your thoughts. Seeing none, I'll give you a second chance. Are you sure? Anybody thinking about it? No? Okay. All right. We'll move on to number 11, which is interviews. I will say tonight, this is -- I've never seen so many interviews in one city council meeting. Never seen so much interest in a number of positions that are open, and I think that's really remarkable. Thank you for all -- for everyone who has expressed a desire to be appointed to one of the committees that has an opening. I would suggest, in light of the fact that we have 15 interviews tonight, when I call your name, please come forward, introduce yourselves, and if you could answer the same question for everybody, which is essentially, why are you seeking appointment to a particular board? And I think that's something that we would all like to hear, and if there are any follow-up questions from council members, we'll -- and you're open to them, that would be the time that we would ask them. So first on our interview list is Jim Regato, who is seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Putnam Fund to a five-year term expiring at the end of March 2025. I thought I saw Jim. Oh, there he is. Hello. Welcome. There is one regular member position up for reappointment on the Putnam Fund. This position is currently held by Mr. Regato. Thank you. There are no vacancies on the Putnam Fund. So as all of you probably know, interviews of individuals applying for appointment or reappointment to various boards and commissions will be held at this meeting. Appointments will be made at the council's March 23rd, 2020 meeting. So, Mr. Regato, if you'd like to say hello and let us know why you're seeking reappointment to the Putnam Fund, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
You're entirely welcome. Good evening. It's a pleasure to see all of you. The reason I'd like to continue on the Putnam Fund is to continue the projects that I -- we have ongoing, that I think are in a positive direction, and I'd like to finish them out, get them going. I'd also like to thank Counselor Browns, who was instrumental in helping me with a problem that we had with one of our events, and he was instrumental in helping us to solve that problem.
You're more than welcome. You know that.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Mr. Regato?
I'd just like to just invite all of you to come to some of our events. I'll just give you a little rundown of what we actually have doing. This year, we've been very fortunate to get cooperation with the new superintendent, Steve Tucker. I've reached out to all the different superintendents we've had in the last few years. Steve has finally been the first one to actually reach back and say, yes, I would like to put a program in the school, which we have done. And it's an author. It's called -- of a book called Kiddo. He's going -- we're going to bring him in. We also have Larry Freights going into the schools to do programs through all the different schools. April 15th, I have Alex Kershaw for a lecture, a World War II author. Writes all about that, so if you like history, come to that one. That's going to be at the Woodside Building. And then on the 24th of April, you'll all enjoy this one. It's a concert of Jay and the Americans, the 1960s band, that we're going to have that. And that will be held at Guilford Auditorium. First concert not to be held in Laconia, but will be held in Guilford. We can't wait for the Colonial to open up, so we can have them all there. In May, we'll have David Brody, who's actually a -- he was local, grew up in this area. He's written approximately 10 books, and he'll be talking about Templars coming to North America. He's a fascinating author and speaker. He'll be up at Woodside in May. We do concerts for Arts in the Park at the mill that Tara puts all -- puts together. And then we have a blues series coming in in November, Ronnie Earl and the Broadcasters and Albert Cummins, two very great blues gentlemen. And we also have the Rat Pack coming in, so a Rat Pack concert. So something for everyone, so I really would love to see your faces there, or at least one.
Thank you, Joe.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you for all you do for the Putnam Fund and how you enrich our culture and our arts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Second on our list, 11B, is David Keats, seeking appointment as a regular member of the Building Code Board of Appeals to a five-year term expiring at the end of March 2025. Just as a little background, the Building Code Board of Appeals consists of five members, three which must meet specific criteria as a registered engineer, registered electrician, registered architect, registered plumber, and a registered fire matic. Currently, the engineer, electrician, and architect positions are filled with individuals registered in those fields, allowing the other two positions to be filled by members of the general public. Mr. Keats is applying to fill one of the general public positions on the board. Welcome.
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor. Counselors, thank you for having me. Dave Keats, and I would say that, as I had said on my application, I'd like to -- everything that I have is in this city. I love this city. I'm employed by the city, my day job as the plumbing inspector. My wife's business is here. Before I came to work for the city, my business was located here. And there isn't really a building that I'm not involved in during the day that goes on here and that's being worked on here. And code is something that I deal with during the day, and I actually really love it. I like seeing these things you put together and trying to work. Some of these older buildings can be tough, and I have a real interest in making sure that they are safe and accessible, not only for the people who are there, but for later people who take over the buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Keats, for your willingness to serve. I particularly liked reading about in your application, your tailgate meetings, which I thought was an interesting form of constructive feedback for people that -- so they learn about code.
It is -- we are -- the state has recently changed its codes to a newer code system, and it's always learning. We are always learning. I'm always learning, and it doesn't help to dictate to these guys how it should be. It's more helpful when we work together. We -- I open up the book, we take a look at it, we read it together, and we both -- we both walk away with a better understanding of what's going on with these buildings.
That's great. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. 11C, we have Mitch Hamel, seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Parks and Recreation Commission to a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2023. There is one regular member position up for reappointment on the Parks and Recreation Commission. This position is currently held by Mr. Hamel, and there are no other vacancies on the Park and Rec Commission. Welcome.
Good evening. So I've been on the Parks and Rec Commission for several years. I've served as the chair for several years as well. I've seen the -- several different policies that have changed with user fees coming into play. We have been highly complimented on our field conditions. That comes from outside of our area as well as from within. Seen great progress in utilization of our user fees for improving specific needs at various facilities. I have been under -- I've worked with three different directors and two different assistant directors, and we continue to progress very effectively with implementation of new programs. One of the bigger challenges I see ahead of us going into the summer season here is employment of enough lifeguards. It's not a unique situation for people, looking to have people work for them. Just the workforce is minimal at this point. So that's one of the near challenges here, but I enjoy what I -- I enjoy my time there, and we've progressed very well. Happy to answer any questions.
Mitch, thanks for your willingness to serve. Continue service, I should say. And I'm just saying, again, on your application, it struck me as terrific that as a commissioner and a Realtor, you often brag about the status of our parks, beaches, and ballfields, which, having traveled the state with my kids to various tournaments, I think we've got some of the best, if not the best, in the state.
I agree with -- I agree with that, and I guess my position allows me not to take any of these facilities for granted because I'm constantly reminded of it, so it's a pleasure to be able to share that. And also the addition of the dog park. A lot of people that live in specific neighborhoods ask that question, you know, where, and it's come up more often than not. So to have that new facility over there has been another asset for us as well.
Thanks, Mitch. Counselor Lippman?
Mitch, thanks for coming forward again. In terms of the lifeguard situation, I think we were talking about last year, making some changes in how we did recruitment. I'm not sure. We looked at, I think there was one other community that was paying for the certification upfront or doing some other things. What changes are we making to try to fill those positions?
So we have -- we have opened up and not limited to any age category. We began that last year in looking for people that are retired and interested in participating in that. The absorption of the fees for potential lifeguards, whether they want to be certified in a specific area for lessons, so all of that is on the table. The hourly rate is aggressive and very competitive with other areas. We just have a limited field to draw from, and we have reached out into many other areas. In fact, the new assistant director is -- can teach, so there's a -- that is a real good asset for us too, from within our group. So we're being as aggressive as I feel we can be, and both Amy and -- his name escapes me here. Matt, thank you. I've been very, very good about reaching out in as many areas as possible to get us the lifeguards we need, so we'll see how we do.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you again.
Thank you. Thank all of you for your service as well.
I might have failed to mention this earlier. Interviews are tonight. You don't have to come back two weeks from now when appointments to the boards are made. You're certainly more than welcome to, but you don't need to be here. Moving on to 11D, we have Jane Whitehead, seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Heritage Commission to a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2023. There is one regular member position up for reappointment on the Heritage Commission. This position is currently held by Ms. Whitehead. There is also one vacant regular member position and one vacant alternate position available on the commission. There are no other applicants at this time. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm currently chair of the Heritage Commission, and my term is up, and I'd like it to be renewed. I moved up here only four years ago from retiring and from the University Assistant of Georgia, and almost immediately, I saw an advertisement for an opening on the Heritage Commission, and I applied for it. And I said at the time, even though I'm new, I've known Laconia since I was a child because my grandfather was President of Scott and Williams. So I have a long memory sporadic, but a long memory of the development of this town and a tremendous fondness for it. And I wanted to, you know, put any energies into making this as beautiful and historically important a place as I can. And we also need more people on the commission, so I don't want to step down at this particular moment, particularly when things are just getting hot.
You don't say. Jane, thank you for your service and your willingness to continue to serve as well. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, don't go anywhere.
I know.
Russ next again, too. So thank you. Moving on to 11E, we have Jane Whitehead, seeking appointment as a regular member of the Historic District Commission. On December the 9th, 2019, the City Council approved an ordinance creating a Historic District Commission to consist of five regular members and up to two alternate members to serve for initial staggered three-year terms. Of the five regular members, one is to be a city councillor and the other a planning board member, resulting in three regular member terms and up to two alternate member terms available to the public. So thank you again, and...
Well, this is both out of my personal and my professional interest, but I was -- I sat with Andrew and Tara writing up the first version of the rules for the Historic District Commission. Went through many changes since, but I was there at the beginning of it, and I think it's a very important cultural stabilization, shall I say, for the city, and will bring up the value of whatever area Historic Commission, Historic District will be applied to. It's also my professional interest because I am very devoted to cultural and to cultural maintenance and cultural heritage. I'm an archaeologist. I have -- even though I retired from teaching Latin in Georgia, I actually, for over half my professional life, have taught art and architectural history, so I'm knowledgeable about that sort of thing, although I'm not great after Constantine. I'm much better before, before the third, fourth century A.D. Do you have any other questions for me?
Pre or post Constantine? Any questions? Counselor Browns, anything?
I'm good with the Bronze Age, actually.
He was pre. No, that's -- that's way after my time.
Any questions for Ms. Whitehead? Seeing none, again, thank you for your willingness to serve. On to 11F, we have Tara Shore, seeking appointment as a regular member of the Historic District Commission. Welcome.
Thank you. I -- first, I'd like to say I'm incredibly excited by, you know, six months of work, and here we are, and there's 11 people. Woo! So I really, again, appreciate the council's work with us over the last six months to get us to where we are today and continuing to move forward with this. I have an incredible passion for the history and the culture of the city and preserving it, making sure that what we have here stays to a point that it can be enjoyed for generations to come and learn, for generations -- learn -- people for generations to come can learn from what our history is. I've stood up here enough. I think you've heard me go on and on about it. I bring to the table for this particular position the knowledge and ability to -- hang on. The knowledge and the ability to research and look into. I think I proved that over the six months of reaching out to several people throughout the United States, the state of New Hampshire and cities surrounding us, learning about historic districts and how positive and beneficial they are to those cities that they are in. I work well in small and large groups. I find that I am very committed to growth and learning about what people have questions about, and I'm willing to go out and find the answer to those things. And I have an open mind. I know that we can't keep every building in this -- in the city, but I have an open mind, and I have some creativity to new use to some of the buildings that we might have in the city, as well as I have a real strong, I think, understanding of the rules and regulations of historic districts and what we can and cannot do, as well as I understand that there are financial possibilities and opportunities to be a historic district that we could take good advantage of possibly, so.
Tara, thank you for your -- not only your willingness to serve, but also all the work you do in the community, particularly associated with the Belnet Mill. Thank you. Are there any questions from the council tonight for Ms. Shore? Counselor Browns?
Are you a member of the Heritage Commission? Are you on that?
I am not a member. I am an active participant in the audience.
Have you considered taking on that role?
No, I have not. I have -- I participate as much as I can with that particular commission if I can get to those meetings and share my thoughts or ideas. This particular commission has a specific place for me in my heart in regards to being on the ground floor for this one, building the foundation a little bit, again, with several other people. I would really love the opportunity to be able to be part of the first three years of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Haynes?
Just a comment. Tara, thank you for the last year. Your service and the work you've done is phenomenal, and I think the community owes you a big thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
On moving along, 11G is Rod Dyer, seeking appointment as a regular member of the Historic District Commission. I don't see Counselor Dyer here, but as we -- as most people know, he's a former city attorney, mayor, and chair of the school board. He has been involved in the city of Laconia for quite some time, we'll say. He is not here, though, for an in-person interview. We'll move on to 11H, Rev. Carl Reitz, is -- welcome. Another former mayor, yes, and thank you for your willingness to come back and serve.
They're everywhere. Thank you for your willingness as well. This possibility for me is something that I really look forward to because not long ago, it's February, in an adjoining facility, the incoming council and the mayor expressed pretty much all together as one voice their positive expectations for the city of Laconia, their pride in what we are and what we can become. The mayor was very passionate in saying that he would like you and us to join him in that endeavor. And when this came up, it reminded me that 50 years ago, almost 50 years ago, I purchased my second home in Laconia, and it was the second oldest home in Laconia, next to the Weeks, I think it's Weeks, on Guilford Avenue. The house that I bought was built in 1650. Very unusual architectural style in some places, but not here. It's a colonial house. And the floor joists in the building, just to be specific about one characteristic of it, the basement had floor joists that were made out of trees that still had the bark on them. It was levelled just on one side for the flooring. I spent the next three years, every waking hour, every holiday, every vacation, trying to rebuild that structure as carefully as I could. Along the way, I took up studies, which included in getting licensed for being an appraiser. I taught residential construction, code enforcement to some of the older code enforcement officers and building officials, but I have a great love for the architecture that's in this city that can be more. I think I can contribute to the body that is charged with assisting in that. I know some of them, and I'm prepared. I'm slowing down a little bit at work. I told myself, it's time, so I have the time to invest into a wonderful endeavor, and there's a lot of positive things that are now happening in the city of Laconia, and it's nice to see so many capable people willing to join in that effort, and I hope to be part of it. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Thank you very much. Moving on to 11I, seeking appointment as a regular member of the Historic District Commission, Laurel Brier. Welcome.
Thank you.
You might want to pull the microphone down there. Yes.
Common problem. So I am Laurel Brier. Thank you very much for having me tonight. I have lived in Laconia for several years, and I actually, since I've been here, was going back and got my master's degree in heritage studies with a certificate in historic preservation. And when it came time to choose where to do my internship, I was given the -- basically given the choice between working with the State Archives of New Hampshire or staying closer to home and working with the Laconia Historical Museum Society. And I chose to stay here and work with Pat Tier. And I chose to stay here and work with Pat Tierney at the Historical Museums, Historical Museum, Historical Society. And since then, I've just developed not just a fondness for the society and the work that they do and the archives and how much work there is left to do, but in the rich history of this city. And I've become an employee of the Historical Society and continued working there since then. And I've been following the development of this committee, and I would love to be a part of it and talking with Tara about it, and just being able to be a part of preserving and maintaining the history of the city, of which there is so much. And much of it is hidden, and people don't even realize that it's there. And so I just, after giving it much thought, decided that, you know, I would love to be a part of just keeping the history alive here and preserving what we can.
Thank you for your willingness to serve, and thanks for keeping your talents local here, you know, the benefit of the city. Any questions from the city council? Seeing none, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Under 11J, if you're following along in the audience or at home, Dawn Johnson has removed her application, seeking appointment. 11K, Hillary Martin, seeking appointment as a regular member of the Historic District Commission. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Thank you for having me. I'm here tonight as, seeking appointment to this commission for many reasons. First and foremost being, I'm a lifelong Laconia resident, third-generation Laconia resident. My grandparents met at the Colonial Theater. And when we chose to buy a home, we chose to buy a home here in Laconia because we wanted to be part of a community. And I take that even further in that I'm an educator here in the community, and that's another reason why the Historic District Commission spoke to me. I'm lucky enough to teach third grade here in Laconia, and one of the topics we teach for social studies is Laconia history, and I thought, what better way to be able to share with the next generation coming up the rich history of Laconia than to be part of something that's trying to preserve and make better the historic buildings and areas that we have in the city? So I looked to this commission as being something or a place where I could learn more, and I'm always willing to learn more. I think that's the best part of my job as an educator. I get to learn something new every day. To bring that back to the upcoming generation, to all the third graders, but also to be a member of this community, be proactive in this community, and, you know, bring my thoughts and ideas to this commission. I also think that before my master's in education, I was an English major, and so my strong written and oral communication skills, I think, would be beneficial to a committee that's posed around, you know, educating others about the historic buildings here in Laconia, the historic places, writing, for education, we write grants and things to look for funds to help preserve the historic district here in Laconia. And so I think some of those skills could be really handy on commissions such as this. And I just really would be excited to be a part of Laconia, it's like taking another step for me, because we've chosen to put our roots here and to go all in, and I just really want to be involved with that.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Thanks for the work you do in the school system, and it's really dynamic to take two passions in your life, education and the history of Laconia, and integrate them. So thank you very much. Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thanks again. Moving on to 11Ls, seeking appointment as a regular member of the Historic District Commission, Sonia Mashashik. Welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening. The reason I'm kind of passionate about this and the Historic District Commission is that the city of Laconia has seen economic growth and development, and sometimes we need to rein that back in because we don't want to just be a community of sprawl. We don't want new buildings just popping up here and there without some sort of regulations being in place. I know we have a planning board and a zoning board that assist us with this, but I also can bring to light, as an architect, reasons why it's important to keep historic fabrics in the community that we live in. Historic structures have a scale to them that not every new building does, and that scale is what people relate to when they walk down a street. It's what makes it inviting. It's what brings character. It's materials that aren't even sometimes used anymore that create the fabric of what we're standing in as a community. If we just let these buildings go willy-nilly and not pay attention to what we have, we can lose things very easily. It's incredibly easy to tear down a building, and some of these structures that we have are irreplaceable. And I feel it's important that that be brought to light, and we try to preserve these structures, but we preserve them in a way that they can still function, not necessarily just as historic relics out there, that there's a way that we need to integrate them into the fabric of our community so that they are still useful structures and that they may be useful to a developer. You know, this commission is kind of starting out and setting the grounds as to, is it able to grow? Are there more areas that should be addressed in the community? So I think it's critical that we establish this district and this commission to kind of carry the historic fabric forward into our future generations and our future commitments to the community. Hopefully, as a member of the commission, I can help to bring light to some issues that may not be prevalent and at the forefront, and also make it, make those structures viable so they can be used in a modern environment. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you have, and I appreciate you all considering me for this position.
Thank you very much, Sonia, for your willingness to serve and the work you do in the community.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thanks again.
Thank you.
11M would be Pamela Clark, seeking appointment as a regular member of the Historic District Looks like Ms. Clark is not present this evening, but I think you can see in the application, she spent nine years as chairman of the Heritage Commission, four years president of Laconia Historic and Museum Society. She was also in charge of the 125th anniversary celebration of Laconia. Moving on to 11N would be Marcia Hayward, seeking appointment as a regular member of the Historic District Commission. I do not see Marcia here in the audience this evening. 11O would be Karen Sullivan, seeking appointment as a regular member of the Historic District Commission. I know Karen is a retired educator here in the city of Laconia and has been very involved in the city for many years. So I believe that concludes the interviews for the positions. Yes, Counselor Browns?
A question of procedure. What do we do about those folks who couldn't make it tonight?
Well, I know at least one of them has reached out and told us ahead of time that she would not be available but would be available to speak by phone, so.
I'm taking it that everybody had a good reason that they couldn't be here. My question is, what are we going to do? Do we schedule a telephone conference? What do we do? How do we approach this? Do we consider them in the absence of an interview?
My, I guess...
I'm looking for a clear path here.
Well, maybe the clear path would be to perhaps reach out to them to make sure that they missed this evening for a particular reason, they didn't just decide they didn't want the position anymore. I mean, I think that would be good, first of all, and second of all, I think we should still consider, if they're still interested in being in an appointment, I don't see why we shouldn't still consider them.
Should we schedule another date for an interview?
Well, I think this is a point of order that you would basically guide us on, so looking for some guidance. Think about it. You don't have to answer it tonight.
I think procedurally, we could hold open the interviews till the next council meeting, have the interviews and make our considerations, and if we wanted to, we'd sometimes, by exception, make a decision in the same evening.
So, and I'll, in holding open the interviews during the interim between now and the next city council meeting, we can contact these applicants that didn't show up for an interview, one, to make sure they're still interested, and second of all, would they be coming to the second, a possibility, would they come to the next city council meeting for an interview? Correct?
If not, then we got to move on, right?
We do. Yeah, I believe so.
If they come to the next meeting for an interview, I believe we could appoint them that day if we wanted to.
Yes, I believe so. Thank you.
I will have Nancy confirm with those people and get back, and just to be clear, we're freezing the pool of candidates with those who've already applied, just for the couple that didn't, weren't able to appear tonight.
Yes, please.
Okay. We will take care of that and let you know.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Browns, for making sure we got a little direction here. Again, thank you to everyone who came tonight as well. Moving on to nominations, appointments, and elections. 12A, this is an appointment of a city councillor as a regular member of the Historic District Commission to a two-year term expiring at the end of March 2020. This, again, goes back to our December 9, 2019. City council approved an ordinance creating a Historic District Commission to consist of five regular members and up to two alternate members. One of those regular members is to be a city councillor. So I am looking for a motion which would be, in order to appoint Counselor Mark Haynes as a regular member of the Historic District Commission to a two-year term expiring at the end of March 2022. So made by Counselor Felch. Is there a second for Counselor Haynes? So made.
I seconded. I have a question. I second the nomination.
Okay, and so Counselor Browns has seconded the nomination, and now we'll open it up to discussion.
Okay.
And questions?
Two questions.
Yeah, I only gave you one when we started, so.
I'm taking two, whether you want them or not.
Go ahead.
Is there a conflict in that he's the liaison to the Heritage Commission now? Does any, is that a perceived conflict? And number two, not that you're not going to get elected or rerun or anything like that, but March of 2022, you will no longer be on this city, on this city council, so.
That's true with all the councillors, huh?
No, you got to do, I think you got to do something about the term, because the term's got to run with the councillor's tenure.
So it seems like we should, this, it should run concurrent when we make appointments as liaisons and set up committees?
Right.
Yes. I think that's the motion. Well, that's something that we should correct. What do you recommend to correct that? Scott?
I think that would just be more of a housekeeping amendment, that we would just adjust the date to have the term expire December 31 of 2021, and that way it would be concurrent with the expiration. I think that's a great point. Planning board, you don't have that issue because there's staggered terms and they rotate through, so it really would just be the council seat and...
Do we need to vote on that?
So do we need to offer an amendment right now to the motion?
Yeah, I just think technically you can amend the date to reflect to December 31, 2021.
So I'd be looking for that motion. Counselor Cheney, would you make that motion?
Yes.
And seconded by Counselor Browns? All right. Any discussion on the amendment to change the term so it would end on December 31, 2021, as opposed to March of 2022? It's an excellent point. Seeing no further discussion, let's call the question. All those in favor, raise your hands, please. Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes, so now we're looking, the emotion, looking for a motion to pass, looking for someone to move the motion as amended to appoint Counselor Haynes as a regular member of the Historic District Commission to a two-year term expiring on December 31, 2021. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Felch. Further discussion or questions?
I've just raised the issue. I'm perfectly comfortable with Mark serving in both capacities. I just raised the issue so we know it's there, but I don't see a conflict. I'm just being obstreperous, you know me, so I'm perfectly happy to have Mark serve as the liaison.
Counselor Cheney, he's still your responsibility, you know. Okay, thank you, Counselor Browns. Anyway, seeing no further discussion, we call the question. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Seeing four votes in favor with Counselor Haynes not voting, that motion passes four to zero. Are you opposed, Counselor Haynes?
No.
Still four to zero. Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve in that commission. Okay, so that now takes us to 13. We do not have anything under communications. Number 14 would be public hearings. Public hearing pertaining to the declaration of city-owned property located on Frank Dean Road, Tax Map Parcel 476-351-6 as surplus. Notice of this public hearing was made available in the February 26, 2020 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, posted at Laconia City Hall, Laconia Public Library, Community Center, and the S.A.U. I would like to open this hearing at 7:47 and 54 seconds and request anyone, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Attorney Al Nix. My office is here on South Main Street. I'm here to represent Bill and Sherri Reed with respect to the request that they've put before the council for this piece of property. I must admit, the history of it is fairly extensive, and I don't have a complete knowledge of it, but to tell you that this is a triangular piece of property that's about .4 acres in size, in front, in its, the front of Mr. Reed's front yard. The city took control of the property because of the cleanup of the dump that had been there for, could have been centuries for all I know, it's decades anyway, so that property was being cleaned up. Since about 1988, the Reeds have maintained that property. They represent to me that, they've also seen it on their tax bill and been paying taxes on it. It is, this property is subject to an activity use restriction. You cannot penetrate that property because of what's beneath that soil. So all that can be done there is to plant grass on it. It stops Moran Road. Moran Road used to pass across there, but that is discontinued now. And so here is this piece of property owned by the city that, on information of belief, the city has no use for, and it would be better, I suppose, in the hands of the Reeds as a front yard, as a part of their overall property. And for that purpose, they have offered the city the sum of $1,000 to take possession of it and to take care of it from here on out.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Scott, is that consistent with the discussion we had at the last meeting and the understanding we have here?
Yeah, I just was looking, I just want to clarify, I think Attorney Nix said it was .4 acres, and we're showing it as .04 acres.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So just wanted to make that clarification, that it is a relatively very small parcel of land.
My only follow-up question is, you're not allowed to break the surface, but grass, though it technically breaks the surface, is okay? Is that correct?
I think it's currently grassed as it is, but that's, you can't dig holes and plant shrubs, put slabs on it. I think this is what Mr. Myers had represented to me.
And I reached out to Attorney Nix when this request came in, and we reviewed that with staff, and we did say this is part of that, and those restrictions will be very clearly stated on any transfer where one to happen, that there's no penetration, so a slab could go on there, you know, grass could be there, somebody could set up, you know, chairs and a picnic table, but nothing of any landscaping or any type of digging, foundation, anything in that parcel, that'd be very clear.
In all transparency, too, there was a stipulation that there was the cost of make of the transfer, considering that... of the transfer, considering that they were expecting it to be somewhat reasonable, if my client's willing to assist it.
Yeah, I said for a $1,000 purchase price, the city wasn't gonna lose money by sharing it as half of routine legal costs. And Attorney Nix thought that routine legal costs were a reasonable approach as well.
Okay. Any questions from the council right now?
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, appreciate it. Thank you. Seeing no other one stepping forward to speak, we'll close the public hearing at 7:51. Thank you. Under unfinished business, is that correct? Yes, we will take it up later, under unfinished business. You have an intermission, councillor. That brings us to the mayor's report. Just a couple of things, and opening my computer, because I wanna get the couple of names correct. Have it here. So, this is something that we'll be talking about a little bit later in the meeting, but I did want to mention that as part of our goal-setting that we did with Primex a few weeks ago, actually, it was on January 30th. One of the items that was a priority and that we all discussed was the creation of the Laconia Business Roundtable, of business owners and business people in the city, talking about some of the challenges they have and maybe some opportunities they would like to work together and maybe work closer with the city on. I would like to let you know, though slightly behind schedule, right now, I've got 13 members of the roundtable, which is, I was hoping somewhere between 10 and 12. There are still one or two other people who need to get back to me, but I will say, so I've structured this right now, we haven't scheduled the first meeting, but I've been very pleased to reach out to folks throughout the city and gauge their interest in getting together and creating this roundtable and having these discussions. And people have been very enthusiastic, and in fact, very interested in getting together and having these discussions. And just, I think everyone I asked said yes, they would like to join. So, in that respect, we're right on schedule, and I think we've got a good group that hopefully meets for the first time sometime right around the end of this month, or maybe the first week or so of April. And sort of keep you abreast and appraised of what's going on, what we're talking about, and maybe some future agendas for that group as we get a little more organized and define a mission. Secondly, I would like to announce the Laconia Human Relations Committee membership for 2020. As you know, that is a mayor's committee. So, the membership is as follows. Myself, Andrew Hosmer, mayor. The chair of the committee is David Stamps. Members include Kate Bruchakova, David Osman, Margaret Donnelly, Janet Simmons, Carrie Chandler, Dennis Bothelme, Reverend Judith Wright, Carol Pierce, and Matt Soza. So, thank you to all of the members and folks who have been willing to serve the Human Relations Committee. And finally, I had an opportunity to attend the Laconia School Board meeting last week, and I just wanna say, I was fortunate enough to observe some students from Elm Street School work through some very complex math problems. And what they were doing is they were working with their teachers to show the school board members some of the strategies they use to solve these math problems. And as somebody who struggled with math mightily as a student, to watch these kids figure out the same problems with different strategies, it was just, these students were just absolutely incredible as far as their ability to communicate and stand in front of a group of adults and show them what they were doing. They were articulate, and they were incredibly competent in talking about, again, complex math equations. And really, the work that Mrs. Moran and Principal Tara Boschman are doing there is truly extraordinary. And students Ava, Asher, and Celia were really the stars of this. So, if there's ever an opportunity to get a sense of what they're doing, I encourage you to do so, because it's remarkable work that they're doing and taking these complex ideas and breaking them down. So, these kids sound like little geniuses, and it was just remarkable. So, that would conclude my mayor's report tonight. Moving on to 16, which is the committee reports. And I think we had a couple of, I know we had a committee, a couple of committee meetings, so be anxious to hear if anyone has anything to report.
We had a government operations committee hearing prior to the council meeting at 6:00. It was what I will describe as well-attended from folks in the community. Councillor Felch had gone to great effort to canvass many of the downtown owners about their feelings on the concept of paid parking in the city of Laconia. He had prepared a questionnaire. A lot of people responded to that questionnaire. I'm gonna say 15 or 20 downtown businesses owners. All those responses were made part of the record. I won't, it certainly wasn't a negative meeting, but it was a meeting in which everybody expressed the idea that the going forward with a paid parking concept at this time was premature. I think that that's a kind way to put it. And virtually all, not all, there were a few people who supported on paper the idea of at least entertaining the concept of paid parking. So, after hearing everybody, looking at all that stuff, the subcommittee voted unanimously to recommend to the city council that, for the time being, the paid parking proposal for downtown be removed from the agenda.
Thank you, Councillor Browns. I did see Councillor Felch, excuse me, walking the streets and knocking on a lot of doors over the past couple of weeks. So, thanks for your effort to get out there and to get a sense of what people were thinking. Councillor Cheney?
I'd like to report on a meeting we had a week ago tonight, a public safety committee meeting, where the fire chief and police chief came before the committee and reported on the status of their agencies and their concerns and their hopes for things moving forward. I would tell you that I received a request from the fire chief at the goal-setting meeting, that call-a-meeting. And I'm glad, I'm glad we did. There are a number of issues, both within the fire and the police department, that I think, over this coming year, I hope the committee can spend more time on and report back to the council on some of their needs and some of their concerns. I do have one issue that I wanna bring up tonight for consideration, because there's a time limit issue. I have been meeting as the liaison from the council, I've been meeting with the police chief fairly regularly over the last two years. We've talked extensively about some of the issues that exist for the department and some of the issues that exist for the city, problems. And in the course of all that discussion, I've expressed to him my belief that higher visibility is one of, not the, but certainly one of, the things that I hope to see the department do more of. And in fact, if you look at the stats from the last few police commission meetings, you'll see the number of their car stops has increased dramatically. Councillor Lippman expressed some concern that we shouldn't be looking to create, you know, a lot more tickets and whatever to try and increase our visibility. And I'm here to assure you that my discussions with the police chief over the last two years have included the fact that visibility doesn't mean more tickets, it means more stops of people who are doing things we'd rather they didn't do, and hopefully warnings to say, "Don't do that again." I can tell you, driving down Parade Road, it's very infrequent that I don't see motor vehicle problems at Elm Street and North Main, red light violations and other things that I hope we could put some effort into. The council may also remember, most of us at least, that last year, last summer, we had a group of folks in from the wiers concerned about speed and noise and reckless operation and other things, and a desire to see more enforcement in the wiers for their quiet enjoyment of their neighborhood. So, what I spoke to the chief about was the potential to put together a traffic unit, which would include some additional manpower. You all should have received a copy of his proposal, which takes in more than just this traffic unit, to address some of this, some of the issues here in the city. But the reason that I bring up the traffic unit tonight, the other things I think we, the committee should look at in more detail in the future, but the traffic detail I bring up tonight, because the police department has a deadline of March, I think it's 11th, March 11th, to submit an application for a cops grant, so that for the first three years, I think it's 120,000, 125,000 gross over three years, funds from the feds to help finance this idea. I have always felt that the number-one priority of law enforcement is prevention. I think when you, when you have to, when you have to start chasing people down afterwards for what they've done, you've kind of failed. I'm hoping that a traffic unit will create higher visibility in the city, deal with complaints of speed and noise and reckless operation, stop sign and light violations. And also, several of us have had complaints about parking, left-wheel-the-curb, parking on the sidewalk, blocking sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera, all of which I hope to see dealt with more fully by a traffic unit. So, what impact does that have on the other issues that the department highlights? I think two specific things. One, it frees up some of the other officers to devote more time to the issues that are time-consuming. It provides a group of people, two in this case, to do things like hit-and-run accidents, reconstruction of accidents, which right now consume time from the rest of the patrol division. So, it will free up the patrol unit somewhat. It also means that when the patrol unit needs additional help, we have two more people. There are 43 sworn officers in the Laconia Police Department. Paperwork the chief handed out to you gave you, number of other communities larger than Laconia and are obviously larger enforcement units, but they didn't have the crime that we have. We're on the red line in a number of areas, and I'm hoping to increase the size of the department to help deal with those issues. When I left the Laconia Police Department on January 1st, 1990, there were 41 police officers. Thirty years later, there's 43 police officers, sworn police officers. I recognize the community has not grown dramatically in that period of time. What has grown, and the lawyers in this room can probably attest to, is the growth in requirements on law enforcement. I was shocked. You all probably are aware that the Merrimack County Sheriff was arrested for DWI, and the court threw out his breath test because they didn't get a warrant to arrest him. When I was a cop, we arrested you and offered you a test, and if you took it, it was admissible. If you didn't, you lost your license for 90 days. Now, you have to get a warrant. The chief and I talked one day, and we were talking about if you walked up to a car and saw drugs in the car, they can't, when I was doing this, it was called exigent circumstances, that the car could be moved, and therefore, it was permissible to seize the drugs. Now, he has to leave a police officer with the car while they go back to get a warrant and deal with the prisoner, find a judge to issue the warrant. All of those things consume time. I'm hoping my proposal tonight to increase the size of the department by two positions to be used in traffic enforcement helps deal with all of those issues. I think the manager can answer questions about the impact on the budget. I know I've spoken to the councillor to my left, and he expressed some concerns for the impact on things like the colonial and other things. And I hope if he has those questions, he might ask them at this time.
Well, you gave me a sort of sense of what it's gonna cost, and had a, I think, we had a brief discussion with the manager about this. But my understanding that the cost, there's gonna be a budgetary cost this year of some $40,000, correct me if I'm misstating, and next year, maybe you just better tell us rather than me trying to remember.
Okay. So, if the focus was on two positions, you have $125,000 total for each position over three years, and that's for salary and benefits. It's not for overtime, it's not for uniforms and that type of stuff. So, targeting in right now, we could look to get somewhere between 20 and $25,000 per position, so times two, between $40,000 and $50,000 into the budget this year. There'd be a similar amount next year, we could slightly increase it. And then the third year, you know, the lion's share of the remaining $125,000, if you will, would come in. So, on a per-employee basis, we could be, say, at $25,000 this year, $30,000 next year, and we might then need to have a bigger jump to be in the area of, you know, $70,000 or $80,000 in that third and final year. So, by being able to step it a little bit, does make it manageable.
But as I understand it, that when the grants, if we apply for the grants and we get them, that there's a fourth year that's mandatory, and that's full cost?
Correct. So, my understanding of the grants is that there's three years where there's shared money available, and then the fourth year, you're required to keep them on, and you can't supplant positions. So, if we were to hire two positions here and go to 45 sworn officers, that's where we would need to maintain that level for four years.
I also, if I may...
Yes.
I also had the opportunity to talk to the chief briefly, because my concern is the impact to the budget, not just this year, but next year and the year after and in the fourth year. And my concern that, I'm not sure I was willing to commit myself to that kind of... And my concern that, I'm not sure I was willing to commit myself to that kind of future budget commitment. And so I wanted to be clear that if we made the application, what kind of impact that would have. And I'm going to let the chief or you talk to that, talk to us about that because my understanding is if we were to apply for the grants and then they weren't budgeted in the upcoming budget, that that may have a detrimental effect on your ability to apply for future grants, so.
I think that's a very accurate statement. If we're going to apply for a grant and it were to be awarded to the city, the city should be fully in the position where we are accepting that grant. Otherwise, I'm not saying you go to the bottom of the list for a very long time, but I think you go to the bottom of the list with these types of grants for a very long time.
So don't say what you just said.
Officer Lippman.
Okay.
Can you walk through the stepping? Again, we get 75% in the first year, 50% in the second year, and 25 in the third, and then 100% responsibility in the.
That sounds, that's, it could be that way. That's actually, I think, a program of how the COPS grants worked maybe a dozen years or so ago. I think the last time I did it in Dover in a capacity down there, it was exactly that. You had 75, 50, 25, and then it was on you. This is now a flat dollar amount of 125,000 that you can kind of spread how you want over that three-year period. It can't be less than 25% of a local match, nor can you use more than 75 grants. So those are kind of your parameters and it's almost that you can design the math to work for how you'd like to build it into your budget.
Hold up, please.
Yes, sir.
When we did this a number of years ago in the fire department, we had sort of pre-funded some of that and to the extent that we have unfilled positions now or expenditures in 2020 that don't have to, or can't be made because of either availability of people that we're recruiting or otherwise lucky budgeting, do you see the potential to sort of put some money away like we did in the fire department situation where we were able to, when it came around, to take the whole thing to be able to get, do it without any problem?
Yeah, so for, just to kind of recap, we absolutely did that with the four firefighters under the SAFER grant back in 2012 or 2013, and it was a similar type of phasing in. And I worked with the chief at that time with the council's guidance and direction, and the chief needed to identify X amount of dollars that he was going to find within his overall budget that we were going to place into a carryforward account to help offset the larger impact as you dropped from 75 to 50 to 25% in full cost. So we could certainly look at something like that as well. I mean, dollars are tight in all of our budgets, I'm sorry, I just want to use that. Sometimes there's value in money flowing to fund balance, as you heard from our auditor with the large expenditure that we made for the Colonial in cash of that 1.4 million. You know, that brings our fund balance just under 6% and 6 is really the threshold. So we try to balance the needs of fund balance and departments, but we could, we could definitely look at how we phase it in and if we can build a little cushion to take that year, we're going to have a larger step to soften it a little bit.
Counselor Lippman?
So another recollection is, okay, we apply for the grant, we're going to hear in what month would we hear?
I think this one's relatively quick turnaround on this, on this application, so it might just be, you know, two months.
So we then have to go and recruit for those positions? And so the timing could be, you don't have to draw down the funds until you have the personnel, correct?
Sure. Maybe we can bring Chief Kenfield up because I think he can speak to about his current staffing level right now and we're in comparison to where it's been the last two or three years, and then also what your hiring capacity might be on some maybe known candidates to you at this point.
Sure. Good evening.
Welcome.
So our recruiting has actually been very good over the last six to eight months. We've actually built off of one of our park enforcement people that is due to graduate from college in May. She is set to come on as of July 1st. That will fill our, that'll fill our roster. In addition to that, we have two other candidates that are in the wings, one of which has the background all complete, who is looking to get out of the Coast Guard in May. So potentially, I think we could be full, we could bring two people on in the month of July.
So you're, if you got, if you, if we got, we applied for the grants and got the grants, you think you'd be able to staff the extra two officers in this budget year beginning in July?
I do.
Okay.
Chief, thanks for coming. These additions, I think maybe I posed this to Counsel Chini too, these are uniform positions that you're looking to add.
Correct.
Right. What's your balance between uniform positions and detectives in your department currently?
So right now, we have two officers assigned to drug investigations, which are plainclothes detectives. We have another detective that works on juvenile cases alone, and we have another one that will be transferred, and I think another one, two positions in there in the next month, couple of months. The rest of our, all uniformed officers.
But you're full staff now?
We will be full staffed in the spring.
In the spring?
We have one position that's open.
One position left.
We'll hold in that position for a candidate whose background is all done, who graduates from college in May.
Okay.
So if you add additional uniformed officers, does that give you the, I mean, it seems to me your detective squad, just to note, it's not about the quality or the quantity of cases they're handling. They seem to be kind of light compared to your uniformed officers. Is that be correct?
I mean, certainly our detectives do a different type of work. It's a very slow work. It's a much more in-depth work that they do. I mean, they're certainly understaffed. I won't say that they're not. They work very hard. But in order to address some of the quality of life issues, the traffic-related issues, I think the better use of these two positions would be on the street as uniformed police officers.
So, okay. Thank you.
So on the finance side of things, do we have a sense of what the carryforward for the department might look like that, that we could bring into fund balance and that we could scroll a little bit away for the future?
I have not had that conversation with the chief yet, but we could certainly look at that. I would think because there's been some vacancies, sometimes it shows up in other places in the budget, so it may not be in the salary. You might find the savings in the salary line item, but the overtime might be spent if you're covering because you've got vacancies. But within the police department, fire and public works, their health insurance shows up in their specific budget. So if there was a vacancy or two at any point during the year for any significant time, it meant that we weren't paying for a health insurance somewhere. So I'd want to look at all the costs, but if the target was to try to find, you know, $30,000, meaning 15,000 per position to put away into a carryforward, you know, the steps could be somewhere in the area of 20 to 25 for a position the first year. Maybe internally in the budget, you do, you know, 30 to 35 in the second year, you know, then in the third year where the bigger increase comes in, maybe you use this carryforward and you keep the increase at 10,000 and now you've kind of built it in. So I think we could look at a progression like that and make it manageable.
If I might just, I attend the commission meetings, Henry, and my recollection is that the admin captain said the budget was 3% below the point for that point in the year. Does that sound correct?
Two to 3%, yes.
Two to, well, so there is some, and in the 13 years I was there, there was always some. So, and I suspect the chief would agree, most years there ends up being some, correct?
So, you know, my concern, and I don't mean to fingerpoint at all, but looking at the information you've provided us, chief, it's very compelling why we could use a couple more officers, just looking at all the information you've provided. What I always get a little uncomfortable with is sort of the short timeframe to make a decision that's going to have a four-year lasting impact. Just, I wish we had had more time to sort of work through this. Maybe that wasn't available and not a possibility, just so I think everyone maybe feel a little more comfortable about it. Absolutely, Counsel Chini.
In fairness to the chief, the push to do this was mine, not his, and I mentioned at the meeting last Monday night, I don't want people to think the chief's out here trying to build his empire. It was me. But the point I want to make to you is, the decision to push forward with this, I asked him within the last 60 days, less than that, 45 days, if he could find some grant funds. He got back to me within a week and then I started this process, so.
Okay, I see.
It's not that he dropped the ball letting us know, it's I dropped the ball, not pushing him.
Yeah, and again, I'm not here to point fingers at anybody.
I knew that.
Just that short timeframe always gets me a little anxious because I want to do what's right, particularly, we all do, right? I mean, and these numbers are very compelling, but I just want to make sure that we're making, that we're making wise financial fiscal decisions as well, so.
I believe there are more things coming for both departments that we will be bringing to the full council. But these two positions, I pushed because I'd like to see them as soon as possible to try and work on some of these motor vehicle problems, some of these parking issues and other things. And again, I apologize for the short timeframe, but it's my fault, not the chief's.
You don't need to. You don't need to by any, by any means.
Yes, he can take the blame. Yes, he can. Let him do it.
And I wasn't meant to point a finger at you by any means, chief, but I want, you know, I think it's one of our primary responsibilities here as the council and as the city government to make sure that you are fully staffed, that we are making our streets, ensuring our streets are as safe as possible, that we're attentive to crime that's going on, to victims of crime in particular, and to take care of the things that, you know, as you said, Counsel Chini, the idea that you have to post an officer at a car when you've got maybe narcotics in plain sight while someone else goes to get a, you know, that's.
That's not really true.
Well, if it were, it'd be very cumbersome and nonetheless, I think it's also an issue of safety, not only for our community, but certainly for your officers, that particularly important to all of us here.
Okay. And if I can, I have some reluctance about this. I share everybody's belief that we commit to law enforcement and to safety. My reluctance about this goes to, one, the short timeframe we have for consideration, and I'm not blaming anybody. I'm not pointing a finger at anybody. And two, I just pointed at you because you took the blame. I'm taking it away. I'm pulling back. So, I mean, and the impact is.
We just talked about this.
Somebody's out there doing something.
It's everything.
So the impact is not just this year and next year, but it's three and four years down the road, and there may very well be a real need for that then, and I imagine there will be. But that's my reluctance in terms of supporting it. And again, I'm not saying, I really, I have to think about this. I mean, we're going to vote tonight, but I'm not saying tube this thing and I'm not saying, I'm not endorsing it 100%. I'm just telling you what my concerns are and that we've got some significant budgetary concerns coming up, not only for this budget, but for next year's budget. And if we continue to do a CPI or whatever they call it at 1.8%, we're going to be looking, we're going to be staring right down the barrelhead. We're almost staring down the barrelhead this year. And so those are my concerns, and I'm just expressing them, and thank you for your time.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, I'd move that the council authorize the police chief. I'm sorry, I would move that the council authorize the police chief to make application to a federal COPS program to fund two uniform positions.
Counsel Chini has put a motion on the table. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Felch. Further discussion on the motion put forward by Counselor Chini.
Counsel Lippman, anything? I think we can, I think we can find a way to swing it based on what the manager and the chief can do in terms of regularly putting some of what can be carried forward towards it, do it like we do with the fire department, make it work.
Do you really believe that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Counsel Hanson?
Counsel Bounce, I share your, because we're making a decision that four years from now, somebody else is going to have to deal with.
Right, they're going to have to eat it.
But however, I, the statistics speak for themselves. And I'm sorry I missed the meeting, Counsel Chini, but I support this wholeheartedly. It's long overdue, and I've spoken with the chief, so.
Any further questions or comments on the motion that's on the table?
I'm going to trust the counselors at the table on this, so.
Counselor Lippman?
I think we've done 15 or 16 budgets and some of them have been harder than others, but I think we're going to find a way to make this one work too.
Call a question?
We'll call the question. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Seeing five votes in the affirmative, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Counsel Chini.
Thank you.
Anything else as far as committee reports? Oops, excuse me, seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please.
I think Counsel Bounce had reported out that there was a motion to recommend to the council to remove the paid parking proposal for downtown from that committee to have it go away, so it wasn't going to appear, and I don't know if we took action on that yet.
Well, so I guess we'd be looking for a motion, Counsel Bounce, to remove 16.0C. Point Roman 5, paid parking proposal for downtown.
So moved.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Felch. Further discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing five votes in favor, that motion passes. Thank you. Moving along on liaison reports. Do we have any liaison reports? Hearing none, moving to number 18, citizens' requests to comment on current agenda items. Anything on the agenda tonight that people in the audience would like to step forward and speak about? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to 19, which is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will start with one item not in my report and just want to give a minute or two update on the COVID-19, more commonly known as the coronavirus, and it's allotted in the news as we all know and is impacting lots of different areas of everybody's life and business and stock market and retirement and you name it. But, and all this information is available on state websites. The lead departments at the state are Department of Health and Human Services, Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management in a very strong supporting role in getting the messaging. Latest details from New Hampshire, four confirmed cases, three of them in the Upper Valley and one most recently down in Rockingham County. So nothing in our area yet. There are regular communications that city staff are involved in on a daily basis with the state, so Chief Biati being, as our fire chief, is also our emergency management director, sits in on these calls, has the contacts. I know the superintendent of schools, school staff, other city staff have sat in on these. Lot of information is available on state websites. We are certainly prepared. All communities in the state are really working through their regional health partners as opposed to having 234 communities all calling and making inquiries and asking a lot of questions, which we know there's a lot of nervousness out there, but all of the communities in the state are working through their regional health partners, as I said, to try to streamline and approach it that way because those are what those networks were set up to be. So a lot of common sense about if you're not feeling well, stay home. If you have, you know, fever and symptoms, you know, self-isolate until you can get tested. tested. You know, sanitizing, coughing into your elbow, washing your hands regularly. I mean, it's a strain of the flu, albeit a different strain that has been seen for a while. But, you know, this country and around the world have gone through the H1N1 and the swine and SARS and different strains. So, we are certainly monitoring it, staying on top of it in that sense, but there is nothing specific above and beyond, other than a whole lot of common sense approach right now. So, that's the message. I'm happy to take questions, but I know that we probably have been all but hearing that, but I just wanted to let you know that, you know, just because we haven't been impacted in the Lakes region doesn't mean that there aren't a lot of hours being spent in the coordination effort. So, I'm happy to move on to my financial and operational trends report, which is included in your packet. So we have one more month left of the building permit values in order to close out the assessing year, and that'll be the final component we use in calculating the upper limits on what can be expended with a budget under our tax cap calculation. So we are, through some new activity in February came in, we are, even with the pace from where we were all of last year, we've got the month of March, which historically has not been a huge bump, but with what looks to be so far some mild weather and looking out in the 10 and 15-day forecast, not seeing anything onerous at this point in terms of temperatures, could potentially drive a little bit more building permit activity into March that may spill over into April. So, I don't have a crystal ball, but it, there may be a tick, if you want to call that. You've got the data there for the fire department with their calls. Want to point out the public assistance data with Glenn and his team in welfare. I had pointed out that one bump in December, but really, if you look back over the last four, five, six months minus that one bump, very good performance with the team in welfare. Council Cheney already alluded to the number of motor vehicle stops under the police department on the second page of the report, so those numbers are there for themselves. We're still in a very strong collection position on the bottom of that page of our two largest revenue streams in the city, one being property tax collection. You could see the number at over 98% is not only in terms of dollars, but in percentage collected, is higher than any of the prior six years that are on that sheet as well. Motor vehicle in terms of dollars also is ahead of last year's pace. In terms of percentage, it's really right on track. We're three quarter, I'm sorry, two-thirds of the way through the year, and that's right on track. We do know the spring months always bring in some higher registrations. Nothing to jump out that causes any concern on the overtime across the various departments. Looking at the boat taxes on the bottom, again, I'll give my little pitch of come in and register your boat in the city. You don't even have to be a city resident. We can do any New Hampshire boat registration. If it's done here, the lion's share of that registration fee stays within the city versus doing it online or at the state, so help that out. Page five, the ambulance history for the collection, just because of the timing of our meeting this month being early in the month and this report being put together the middle of last week, we don't have February collection dollars available. We've got some of the billable amounts there, but nothing in the collection yet. We still, on the bottom part of the billing report, the collection, not a huge tick anymore, but a couple of thousand dollars this month over the prior month. So you can see on the bottom of page five, the lower right second column in, the percentage collected, you know, we pretty much run in the high 60s to low 70s collected, with the prior fiscal year being 69% collected of all the net billables. So, you know, we're at 51%, but we've got a full years of trend to follow, and that's not raising any concerns for us now at this point. Winter maintenance, February overall, a couple of freezing and snowy conditions, but nothing significant accumulation. We are in good shape right now with the amount of salt that we have in the salt shed, which is a large expense. So even though we've expended, you know, a fair amount of money this month, a good chunk of it is sitting in the shed. And again, the forecast is, I know there's always that April Fool's blizzard, and if it happens, it's because I put my snow shovels in the attic yesterday, so you can blame me on that. But I will stop there and take any questions you may have on that report or anything else tonight.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Let's move on to new business here, under 20A, authorization to purchase road line striping equipment and to utilize impact fees in an amount of $13,100. Scott, would you like to lead that?
Yes, so this was an item that had come through partnered with another small piece of equipment through the CIP process. It was a second line painter, along with a grinder, so you can get rid of lines if you're changing the lines. And speaking with Wes, I said we've got 13,000 and change sitting in the impact fees. Which one of these would really help you be more efficient come spring, and if so, we can get them authorized? I'm assuming this is relatively a stock item, and we could have it in the city after going out to bid and purchasing and being able to put it to work this spring. That way the crews go out, they've got white, they've got yellow on the same truck, they're much more efficient, and we do a better job. So, that's what the request is for, and similar to what we did with the Weir's Beach Bath House, we're trying to move this now so that we can take full advantage of a season using the impact fees.
Okay, so I've been looking for a motion, the council authorized the purchase of road line striping equipment and to utilize impact fees in an amount up to $13,100. So made by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Councilor Cheney. Any discussion or further questions? Seeing none, hearing none, call the question. All those in favor, raise your hands. Seeing five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Moving on to 20B, which is Discussion of Goal Setting Summary by Primex. I don't think that we need to have too much of a discussion here, but just letting people in the audience and at home know that the City of Laconia, in conjunction with Primex, had a goal-setting meeting, forum, on January 30th, 2020. We were, was attended by all city councilors, as well as department managers, city managers and department heads. And the idea really was, and I think it was a great idea to do this, and I'm so glad that we did, because it was an opportunity for all of us to get together outside of the council chambers and have discussions about what our own priorities might be for the city as we approach the next two years and also start to build better relationships with managers and department heads. Scott, will this document go to the city website, or in the past, how have we disseminated it, if we have at all?
That's a great question, Mr. Mayor. So we will post this on the city website under the Government and City Council page, and then, once it's approved, various components of this will have different department heads take the lead on it. Some might be one department, some might be two or three departments. And what we'll ask them to do is provide a rolling update, so that if you adopt this tonight, you might look for the first update on progress towards the goals and various benchmarks of dates that you have set, and provide those updates maybe on a quarterly or every four-month basis. And we would just leave, you know, what the progress was with a date stamp on it, so to speak, and then three or four months later, the next update would come, so people can track the progress and the public can do it. And if we, if we need to pivot at all on anything, you know, this is a working document. If we need to amend something, amend a date, add a new goal because something we're not thinking of now may land on our radar, we can do those adjustments along the way. But this will be public, and those updates will come from various departments to you that way.
Terrific. I think what the public will find when they look at this document online is that each counselor and myself had an opportunity to talk about what our priorities were for the city, and then it was condensed really into what we might call strategic objectives. And it was economic development was in no particular order, but I think economic development is something that all of the councilors and myself shared, was a priority for us. Second was our infrastructure, parking garage, replace or renovate, as well as determining other projects to improve the quality of life for both visitors and residents. Interesting enough, we've sort of, we can check one off there, can't we? And that, because it was determined through policy, fees for parking, whether we're going to use meters, and it looks like we've addressed it, and we're ahead of schedule on that. Well done, well done.
We're way behind schedule on the parking garage.
Well...
Just...
We'll get to that.
I was going to focus on the good stuff, okay? And the third was our quality of life, another strategic objective. And that includes property maintenance in the city, certainly services to our senior citizens and those with substance abuse issues, and continue to grow and support the schools to ensure good working relationships. So, in regards to economic development, to go back to the top, the Business Roundtable was also part of that as well. So, I guess in closing, we can, or we can say that we're on schedule with that as well. So what I'd like to do, I believe, is seek a motion to adopt this as our working document of strategic goals for the city council over the next two years. Looking for a motion on that, so made by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Councilor Felch. Any further discussion or questions on this? Hearing none, seeing none, call the motion to a vote. All those in favor? I see five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes, and how soon before it's up on the website?
Probably tomorrow morning.
Well done, well done.
I won't be doing it. I don't have that skill set, but it will get done.
The council packet already, so it's available online, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll make it a standalone so that it won't be embedded into the agenda as well, yes.
Good. 20C, request to approve revisions to the city's welfare guidelines. And I'd ask city finance manager Glenn Smith just to give us perhaps an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. What you have in front of you is an update to the guidelines that are approved by council back in 2014. And I'll say in going through this, what was approved and is placed in 2014 has served the city very well. But times change, and it's prudent to review the guidelines every few years to bring them in line with current practices and also any changes in legislation. What you have in front of you tonight really has very few changes, because again, it's working well. The primary ones are updating in Appendix A, the amount of rental allowance that is allowed. There's a certain amount that we can, that the staff is restricted in providing assistance for rental housing. The numbers that were set as a ceiling back in 2014 are, don't really work in 2020, excuse me. So, those are updated based on average rentals in our area. Other than that, there's just some minor housekeeping items. We, as you can see from Scott's report, we're placing a higher priority on getting reimbursements when we can for welfare expenses. There are some opportunities within the law to do that under what's called seeking reimbursement from legally liable relatives. That was not defined in the current welfare guidelines, so we're trying to strengthen it up so we can pursue that even further. And lastly, the current guidelines, occasionally the staff will make a home visit if for some medical reason a applicant cannot make it into the office. The current guidelines specifically prohibit the staff from being accompanied by a police officer if they feel that that is appropriate. Now, I will say in my time here, that is, there's never been a concern with that, but it is prudent to at least allow for that option if there ever, if that ever did allow. Other than that, I think what you're looking at is changes to definitions and other housekeeping items.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just will note, it's a 35, 34-page document in totality, not that, not that everything has been amended or edited by your department, but it is a rather lengthy document here that, as you said, has served us well, but I think I'd like an opportunity to work on this and do a little deeper dive into it myself.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Hold on one second. Do you have a question?
I was wondering if we could get a redline version of it?
Yes.
Certainly, we can do that.
I think that would be really helpful. Thank you very much, Councilman. So if we get a redline version on that, it'd make it a little easier to analyze.
If I might, not being familiar with this at all, could I make a motion that we table this?
For the next meeting?
Yes. So for a further review.
So, is there a second, there's a tabling motion, seconded by Councilor Cheney. Tabling motions are non-debatable, so we'll call the question. Those in favor of tabling the motion to adopt the welfare guidelines as presented until our next meeting, when we'll have a redline version, I believe. Raise your hand. I see five votes in the favor. This is tabled until the next meeting. Thank you very much. Under 20D, that's our, we have a request to accept two JAG grants awarded to the Laconia Police Department in a total amount of $30,478.96. I have a staff report here submitted by Lieutenant Gary Hubbard. Briefly, the Laconia Police Department is in receipt of two grants awarded by the Department of Justice under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG program. And these are, one, grant award 2018 hyphen DJ Delta JAG hyphen BX Bravo X-ray hyphen 0089 in the amount of $15,126.96 for the purchase of four helmets, four tactical vests, four medical kits, and eight M4 rifles with associated equipment. Through a clerical oversight, this grant award was not presented to council when it was awarded. Number two, grant award 2019 Delta Juliet hyphen Bravo X-ray hyphen 0304 in the amount of $15,352, $352. Also for the purchase of four helmets, four tactical vests, four medical kits, and eight M4 rifles with associated equipment. The requested equipment will be used in active shooter incidents in general patrol and during training exercise. JAG grants are included in the list of anticipated grants presented to the council each year. Consequently, public hearings were conducted for the acceptance of these grants in conjunction with the annual anticipated grants public hearings conducted on July 19th, 2018 for Grant 2018 and July 8th for the Grant of 2019. Fiscal impact, there is no fiscal impact as this grant does not require a local match. The staff recommendation is acceptance of these grants as they provide essential equipment required to ensure the safety of our officers and the citizens of Laconia. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grants for 2018 as described in the amount of $15,126.96 and the grant for 2019 as previously described in the amount of $15,352 as presented. So made by councilor.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilor Cheney, seconded by Councilor Felch. Any questions or comments about the motion that's been on the table?
Question. Do we already, have we already taken the money?
We have not.
Okay.
They were included in the budget, so the public hearing was held, and all of our stuff is just looking for that formal vote by the governing body in order for the federal program to release the equipment and award it, so.
All right. Call the question, seeing no questions or comments. All those in favor? Seeing five votes in the affirmative, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to unfinished business. Under 21A, request to purchase city-owned property. As we heard earlier this evening, this is a request of Billy Reed, the owner of property located on Frank Bean Road, who has requested that the city consider selling a small city-owned parcel of land that is adjacent to his property. The portion of Mr., the portion of Mr. Reed wishes to purchase is shown on the attached map identified as Tax Map Parcel 476 hyphen 351 hyphen 6, and consists of 0.0 acres, four hundredths of an acre. The purchase price proposed by Mr. Reed is the sum of $1,000. Under staff recommendations per sections 183-7 and 183-8 of the city's code, city council held a public hearing earlier this evening to declare the property as shown on the attached map as surplus with consideration of a sale to Billy Reed as outlined above. The city manager's office has notified the immediate butters of the date of the public hearing. This report was submitted by city manager Scott Myers. So... This report was submitted by city manager Scott Myers. So the first thing I'm going to, well, I'm looking for a proposed motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to interrupt you. I think we're probably going to want one motion first, and I apologize for not putting it there. So the first motion would be that the city's going to declare the property surplus.
Right.
And that's my apology for not having that motion in there.
So the first motion we're looking for?
To declare surplus, and then you, to declare this parcel, and you can reference it through the tax map as surplus.
So I think we're also going to be looking for an amendment on this, too, if I'm not mistaken, because the purchaser is going to cover all closing costs associated with it as well.
We can make that part of the second motion, too, but yes.
So the first motion we're looking for is for the council to declare city-owned property located on Frank Bean Road, Tax Map Parcel 476 dash 351 dash 6, as surplus. So made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Cheney. Discussion or questions? Counselor Bowens?
No.
Okay.
Let's rock and roll.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, hearing none. Call the question. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seeing five votes in the affirmative, the motion passes. Secondly, second motion is a move, looking for a motion to approve the request of Billy Reed, through his attorney, to purchase city-owned property located on Frank Bean Road, Tax Map Parcel 476 dash 351 dash 6. I don't think it needs to say a surplus there, right?
No, I think that's what the first motion did for you. Thanks.
Okay. Looking for that motion. Counselor Haynes, seconded by Counselor Felch. Any further discussion?
Did you clarify when you just read that, that the attorney's fees and all closing costs are in that?
So I'm looking for a motion right now, a friendly motion, to, which would indicate that closing costs of this transaction are going to be paid by the purchaser, Billy Reed. So made by Counselor Bowens, seconded by Counselor Lippman. Questions?
I was just going to say, and we also want to make it very clear, and that the transfer will clearly indicate that there is no ground intrusion on this parcel.
And the amendment will so include that. Thank you. Any further discussions or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion. Seeing five votes in the affirmative, the motion passes. Now, we're going to move the motion as amended, to evoke. All those in favor. Seeing five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes as amended. Thank you. Yes.
In terms of, is intrusion defined in the sales document?
Yeah, it'll be, I think the technical name in environmental law is Activity Use Restriction, AUR, so we will use that language to put that in there. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel.
Thank you, counsel. This takes us to counselor comments. Counselor Cheney?
Didn't want to disappoint, Mr. Mayor.
You never do. You never do.
I love it when you lie to them like that.
Counselor Haynes and I had an opportunity earlier tonight, rather briefly, but I was, I learned that, that there is no longer a loading area for the Bellknap Mill. And when we put the angle parking in, we took away the loading area. I would like to ask, whatever has to be done, that we set aside two spaces outside that back door that's closest to Beacon East, stripe it so that it's, that it's a loading zone for, for the Bellknap Mill. We, we got quite a increase in parking along here. I think we can afford two spaces.
I just had that discussion with Tara Shore two days ago, and I was going to bring it up, so thank you.
Perhaps we can, would that, does that need to be added to the agenda, or just make a request of DPW?
If there's consensus, I can handle it administratively.
Is there consensus on that?
Yes.
Seems like there is. Unanimous consensus. Thank you, Counselor Cheney. Anything else?
Thank you.
Any other counselor, counsel comments? No. So this will conclude our public agenda this evening, but we will be moving into non-public session under RSA 91-A colon 3 Roman 2, concerning consideration, subsection D, consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which, if discussed in public, would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community. So I'd be, I believe, we look for a motion to go into non-public or not?
Yes, you look for a motion for that, yeah.
So.
So I move that we go into non-public.
Second. So Counselor Bowens?
So let's go into non-public first.
A roll call, please.
I don't think there'd be any announcement afterwards.
Counselor Cheney.
Yes.
Counselor Bowens.
Yep.
Counselor Lippman.
Yes.
Counselor Haynes.
Yes.
Counselor Felch.
Yes.
Mayor Hosmer.
Yes. We are in non-public, and off the, not yet. Let us know.